Welcome everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for May 19, 2022. Okay, can I get a motion to open this meeting, please? Vice President Savino, second.
Second.
Trustee Michael Martin, all in favor?
Aye.
Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. I want to recognize the passing of Ryan Daly. Ryan Daly graduated from MHS in 2012. He was a multi-sport star from Mahopac, a heck of a nice kid. And our hearts are bleeding blue and gold for Ryan and his family right now. So please remember Thomas, his mom and dad, Thomas and Joanne, and his brothers, Thomas Jr. and Nicholas, as they're going through this horrible time in their lives. Thank you. See you. Okay, welcome to the Mahopac community. Tonight we have a pretty, very nice agenda for this evening. I know that we're all a little disappointed about the vote, but we will begin to act by in a few minutes. I'm not as discouraged as most because I have the most faith in this community and I know that our schools are the heartbeat of this community. And I know that we will be able to get through this together. So what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to turn it over to our Lusby Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Anthony Carlo, for a very special, special.
Thank you very much, President Marmi. And Don Berger, do I would like to call off our Director of Guidance, Mr. Aaron Klein, our Middle School Counselor, Mr. Peter Vann, who will present a very special, significant honor that our high school students have received. He just talks about an incredible quality of education that goes on here at the Mahopac High School District. So Aaron, turn around. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight we have the pleasure of recognizing one of our students from the Mahopac High School with tremendous honor and award from RPI every year as a Medal bestowed upon a student. And without further ado, I'll call out Mr. Vann, our Counselor, to give a more of an introduction. Vann?
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I have the honor of presenting this year's RPI Medal. The RPI Medal was first presented in 1916 for two purposes: to recognize the academic achievements of young students and to motivate those students towards careers in science, engineering, and technology. The medal was awarded to promising secondary school juniors who have distinguished themselves in math and science. Medalist winners receive the $30,000 per year merit scholarship for four years if they apply or accept it, and ultimately decide to enroll in RPI. This year's winner is rising senior Jessica Sturges. Jessica. So Jessica has an outstanding way to teach in 98.0, placing her in the top 10% of the class. She is taking a rigorous course also at Carlin, who honors college and AP level courses. Jessica will also be completing all of our Project Leadway courses by the time she graduates and has done exceptionally well in each. In addition, Jessica is very involved in activities at school. She's a member of the soccer team, basketball, and flag football. In addition, she's a member of the Spanish Club, Strive Club, Most, and Yearbook. She is a warm leader on the field and in the classroom. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Jessica, congratulations once again. And again, I just want to highlight, and I think President Marmi mentioned, but you know, we talk about engineering, science, and what we've done over the last number of years that people ask questions about, and what happens, and what do we do with our budgets. So we started this Project Leadway program a number of years ago to address the need because we know in the world there's a lot more in for engineering, computer science, and we add this program to the high school. And you heard where this young lady could be attending an amount of scholarship money because of the programs that we put in and what we do put in our budget to try to continue to enhance the educational experience for all of our students. So Jessica, congratulations. Also, you know, well-rounded, we've had celebrations in the last two or three months about our student athletes. And as another example of a young lady who is incredible when it comes to the classroom, yet she's involved with activities and really well-rounded, and that's just attributed to Jessica, you, your parents, your family, Mahopac High School, and all your teachers along the way before you got to this year that added to that. So again, congratulations on behalf of myself, the Board of Education, and the entire Mahopac community. Good job.
President Marmi, back to you.
Okay, so we have our agenda. We didn't receive any comments for tonight's agenda. I just want to know if we had any comments on the breakfast program? No, we haven't had any comments on the breakfast program.
I was just reiterating.
Breakfast program, so no comments on the breakfast program. I'd like to move now because we'll do some housekeeping of our own right now. So we have a few motions. So what I'd like to do right now is going to get a motion from this board to accept the Treasuries Report for February and March 2022. No move. Trustee Michael Martin, second.
Second.
Second trustee McDonald, all in favor?
Aye.
How about the warrants for February and March 2022? Motion to accept. David Fafaro, trustee, thank you, second place. Trustee Bendalula, all in favor?
Aye.
A motion to accept our revenue status for February and March 2022. Motion placed. Vice President Savino, second.
Second.
Second trustee Raven McDonald, all in favor?
Aye.
Budget transfers, February and March for 2022. Motion to accept, placed. No move. Trustee Tanner Cracker, down at the end, thank you, second place.
Second.
Trustee Michael Martin, all in favor?
Aye.
Of course, our regular meeting for March 2022, please, motion to accept. Vice President Adams Savino, second place. Trustee David Fafaro, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. President, did we miss subject E? I don't think we voted on subject E. Did we miss that, voting on subject E?
The budget transfers?
No, the extra classroom financial activity?
We didn't vote on the extra classroom.
Oh, okay, sure. So this will make a note on that. So can we get a, can we get, thank you, trustee Cracker. Can we get a, can we get a motion to accept the extra classroom financial activity for March 2022, please?
No move.
Tanner Cracker, second place.
Second.
Second, Michael Martin, trustee, all in favor?
Aye.
Very much. And now I'll turn it over to our Lusby Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Anthony Carlo.
Thank you once again, President Marmi. So I'd like to start the evening with some congratulations. Our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Michael Tomley, and his wife Stephanie. Today, they have the birth of a big daughter, Stephanie Angelica, who was born this morning. He now has a duplicate, or three boys and a girl, so congratulations. That's awesome, that's wonderful. Before I turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mrs. Plessy wants to give us a little bit of an update on the timeline. Just a quick, last night, the Board of Education, our board session, myself and the Cabinet had a nice discussion about, as you know, the results of what happened on Tuesday night and then what our next steps will be. The Board has decided, they had three options. First option would be to vote a contingency budget. Second option would be to keep the same budget up that was defeated on Tuesday. Or the third option, in which they elected to do, was to charge me and the Cabinet and administrators to go back and shop our expenses to reduce the budget. So that's the work we'll be doing over the next couple of days and next week. I'm going to ask Mrs. Plessy at this time to come up and share with the community a timeline on things that are happening going on. I want you to pay specific attention to the following. Budget hearing is ex post facto, it's after the fact. We go through this every year. It's basically the pro forma type of thing that happens by the state. All the work is done before that. So the same way that we had a budget hearing before the original budget, there'll also be a budget hearing with the second vote. However, there is, and you'll see on the presentation, a night in which we are looking for community input. There'll also be a survey coming out to the community in which we ask you to participate. Mrs. Plessy will speak about that. So as we move forward, it's important to hear from you, not to hear from you behind the computers, but to hear from you in person. It's very difficult. I can't help you if I don't know what the issue is. We had eight meetings, eight. Nobody showed up, except that the hearing, the lovely lady here showed up and had a question, not one. But it's difficult to be able to understand what the angst and anxieties are so that we can work with it. It can happen next time. Because at the end of the day, ladies and gentlemen, I can't tell you how to vote, it's not my role, responsibility, I need you to get out to vote, but it will impact the students. You saw the letter I sent out the next morning. It will have widespread consequences in this school district if this budget goes down the next time. That's the reality, okay? It happened, this is Mahopac, Mahopac, we'll dust ourselves all, we'll come together, we'll work together to defend our kids. So without further ado, I turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Sandra Plessy. Sandra?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So the next steps for our budget vote would be on Tuesday, May 24th, we will meet as a budget work session and present to the Board some of the options for reductions to the current budget that was presented for the budget vote the other night. On Tuesday, May 31st, that is the night we will have a budget forum where everyone will get up and speak, that will be prior to adoption. So that gives you the option to speak to any reductions that have been presented. On Thursday, June 2nd, that will be the budget adoption. And we will adopt a budget presented to voters, and at the same time, we will let you know that the contingency budget will be adopted. So if the budget fails, the contingency budget is automatically adopted. So we will tell you what will be cut from the budget at that time. Then on Monday, June 2nd, we will present the budget statement. It will be available online for everyone to see, and that's an required document that and all the documents that are in there are required by the state. And on Thursday, Tuesday, we will have the budget hearing. Again, as Superintendent Carlo said, it's ex post facto, so the time to speak is on May 31st, during the budget forum. And on Thursday, Tuesday, June 22nd, we will have the budget vote. There will also be a budget survey. So a link to that survey will be distributed by email and social media. In addition, we will publicize that in the Mahopac News next week, next week's publication. And then we will ask that everybody respond to that survey by May 31st, prior to the budget forum, so that by 10:00 a.m. on that day. So budget vote on June 21st will be 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The location will be determined.
So let me, let me talk about that. And this sometimes are the consequences that happen. Now, there's a lot of things that might have happened with one event happening, there's a multiple ripple effect. So June 21st is scheduled for the eighth grade moving up segment. And so now what happens is, you know, having a vote, you say, you know, this goes to nine o'clock at night, could become problematic with traffic and traffic control. The issue becomes that it's difficult to move it because the next day winds up maybe raining. And now what happens if we get rain on that day winds up happening with that, that ceremony. We can't go into a Saturday. So we're really trying to determine right now, because it just happened Tuesday night, what the best location may or may not be moving forward. Because if we then move it to an elementary school, that we, they have their ceremony. So you can see, it's not as easy. We're working on it. I hope to come to some type of a resolution by tomorrow. We'll be on my update, we'll definitely update security next Tuesday night. But sometimes these are the unintended consequences that become an issue. So we're going to work on that, try to be honest and open, that's why I said it's, you know, location to be determined. So thank you, I appreciate it.
And further on that, June 21st's date, we must vote the vote. We don't have a choice on that date, that is prescribed by the state. Our vote will be need to be counted by paper ballot, it will be taken by paper, and it will be counted by hand. The accountant has an election, which is the next week, while the machines will be locked up for that election, we cannot use machines. Road registration, the last day to register with the district clerk, Melody Baraka, will be on June 14th. We will have in-person registration that evening from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the district office. All absentee ballots must be received by June 21st at 5:00. We did have some people coming in after 5:00, we cannot accept them. So if anyone is going to be voting by absentee ballot, please just be sure it is in either the ballot box by the school district or brought to the location of the vote by 5:00 that day. And then more information, as we compile it, will be available on the district clerk's page at Mahopac dot org. We're just compiling that now. But all of the same things that happened in the last vote apply to this vote, it's just some different timing. So we'll be updating that for you. And that's my update at this time.
Mr. Baraka, do you mind just surveilling, letting the roaring stone of people out there about the importance of getting your information in by June 14th? Because there were some individuals who wanted to register to vote that day. Explain that process, it's really important.
So the last day to vote, or the last day to register to vote would be at the district clerk's office, at 1179 East Lake Boulevard, on June 14th. That will be the last day to register to vote for this election. And if you're not sure if you're registered, you should always call me, I can check. But I will come into the office by that date. You can also come in anytime between 8:00 and 4:00 p.m. on that date.
Thank you very much, Professor Baraka, I appreciate it. On Board of Education, members, are there any questions? Are we going to start the presentation? We spoke about it last night, you would charge us of coming before the public tonight with an overview of what we're doing, anybody guess?
Just to clarify, that day, this presentation, do that get posted as well?
Yes.
When will the absentee ballots be available?
The absentee ballots will be known as soon as we know the number, you know, is going to be on there. And then they'll be mailed.
So one thing I was thinking about, and I just remembered, two years ago, is when the ballots, there was no machines, but it was hand counted. And I remember it was recorded online, or livestreamed online, so people could watch the counting. I think that would be a good idea again this year, since we're not using machines. I know it may be a lot to ask, but I think that's good transparency, it just restores trust in that aspect of it. I was a candidate that year, and I just remember seeing, just being like, this is good, it was counting, but it's livestreamed for anyone to come and see it. So that might be something we definitely might know.
It's not a problem, it was livestreamed that year because it wasn't open to the public. It is open to the public this year, however, did your preference likely livestream?
I think something we should do, for the Cabinet at least, personally, that's what I have.
Thank you very much, Board of Education. Back to President Marmi. Okay, so we have, so we have committee reports, we have, we have two committee reports. I have HR committee report, the Prince of Dev's Labor are in this, are in our consent agenda for this evening, met on May 11th. It was myself, it was Vice President Savino, trustee David Fafaro, and Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Thank you, everyone, for your input. And yeah, that is on the senior agenda. Go over to Finance. Okay, all right, so we're going to HR. Okay, so what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to, I'd like to motion to accept this evening's regular agenda.
Thanks, Mr. Marmi.
No move. Trustee Martin, second, please.
Second.
Trustee McDonald, all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion, please, to accept this evening's consent agenda. Motion to accept, please. No move. Trustee Martin, and second, please. Vice President Savino, all in favor?
Aye.
What I'd like to do right now, we'll go into our, into our very important resident comment area of this evening's, this evening's meeting. Melanie, do you have people to comment for this evening?
Yes, I'll say yellow, I'll check.
Okay, very good. And just remember, we're going to, we'll try to keep it to three minutes and, you know, yeah, no, you can tackle the other.
I was speaking to you.
Thank you, great.
Thanks, don't come on my back. Sorry.
Hi, everyone, thank you. I appreciate you guys always letting us have a comment. I did watch the session meeting last night, I was not able to attend physically, which I know is really hard for a lot of parents. I had to get to here tonight, you know, to try and just get out to meetings every month, which I most likely will be at. So just want you guys to know that that's probably a reason why you don't get a big crowd of people all the time. Don't think people aren't watching. So that was my big thing. And I know Mr. Carlo mentioned that the budget meeting, there was only one person, she's sitting right here. I did try and make it to that meeting, I got there, the meeting was over. So that's another thing, sometimes timing just doesn't work. That happened on some other occasions where meetings actually are much shorter than people think. So not to give anybody an excuse, but we try. So these are what I heard last night. I don't know why people voted the way they voted this year, but I can give you some insight on what happened. So we have a lot of community members that might have been on social media, that might not be having children in our school district. So it's kind of hard to get the word out there as what the budget really means and when these meetings are happening. If they're in the paper, maybe it's in PFP, you know, really just blast everybody with some more information and to get people out here more. I mean, I know a lot of people don't do social media only because of the drama. There's other people that are elderly and they don't have anybody to reach out to, so they don't know where to go for the information. I mean, this is being streamed live right now, but who knows who's really watching? I know email blasts go out, texts go out, that's all the community members that have children in the school. So if you can just get a better list, or I don't know how you guys have it, you know, community members just email blasts, plus the postcards are a little vague, just a little bit more information. I think everybody needs more information. Also, the YouTube, we love it, but the audio is a challenge as well. So that's another thing that I'm just thinking, outside the box, of why people aren't understanding what's happening in our district, because it doesn't affect us, it affects everybody. And right now what's happening in our economy, there's people in our own town that need food, there's people, we're running food tribes. So to ask somebody to vote yes or no, I'm not saying which direction people went in, but it's really hard to ask somebody to vote yes to a 3.5 or 3.36 percent raise in a budget when we do see similar districts having a little bit less of a percent increase. Again, line by line, I appreciate last night you guys all banning together for the majority to say, let's start, let's just look a little deeper, a few hundred thousand dollars here, a few hundred dollars, a thousand dollars there. Maybe there's something that we're missing. And if there isn't, at least we know we tried. But to go out there and to say that people that may have been candidates out there for the Board that may not have been, that are going out to telling people to vote no, I just don't see that happening. I didn't hear anybody telling anybody what to do. I believe they spoke to everybody to make that decision themselves. So I kind of heard that yesterday, and it just kind of took me back. I didn't really know why that was being said. And I also didn't really understand why since he was voted no, to just go back and the thought of you guys should put the same budget out there. I didn't see that being a winner, you know? A lot more people came out to vote this year than they did the last time. So another comment was made where people vote no, and they only vote no. I don't, I don't think that's, that's a justifiable thing to say either, because a lot more people did come out this time. We've got oil prices that are, gas prices, food. People are just really looking at their home budget right now. And to see that our homes are being assessed 100% every year, there's just so many things that are piling up that it's hard. I have lived here my entire life, maybe you have this town, but the town next to us. But I see it, I see what my mom voted for, because people have fixed incomes. We're not all blessed with having a pension, you know? My father, God rest his soul, died and lost, my mom lost everything. So there's people out there that don't have anything, but then there's other comments that you see on social media, well, maybe you should just move. That's what I thought this week. How are you going to tell people that they've lived here their whole life to just stop it up and move? You know? So I'm just here to give my comments. I don't know how people voted. I know I have kids in the school district, and I want to see the rankings go a little higher than I think. I think so, little. So we've got a long way to go. And signing for is going to be a lot better, you know? I just, I'm not afraid just to tell you and make it real, that people didn't just come out to vote yes or no just because somebody told them to do so. People did it because they're looking at their bottom line at home, and they want to move. They don't want to move because somebody's telling them to move. So, thank you. I've had other things on my agenda, but I'll just be able to that some next week.
Uh, can you see Jack Motto?
Jack? Welcome, Jack. Good evening.
So if you don't believe he's not here for a congratulator, because I think that's a great way to start the meeting, it's nice to offer the positive, but there's so much to thank you going on, right? So thank you for the time to speak tonight. Going to speak regarding the last night's work session meeting and the district budget that was voted down. I'm going to go a little off script, okay? I'm going to try to stay in this, but you're going to hear a couple of repetitive things from Dan Geller. So first, I'd like to say it was disheartening for a sitting board member to accuse candidates of this last election of telling residents not to vote for the budget. Accusations not founded in fact are extremely dangerous to the community and to the reputation of the school board. While you were speaking from your opinion, you should be more careful and do your research before you open your mouth. Mr. Carlo, you mentioned that you felt there were a lot of anti-union talks this time around, and I can't speak for everybody, but I can tell you, I know a good amount of residents that have eaten employees themselves that were against this budget, while there were some that were for the budget, and it was not an attack on the union. And speaking with a lot of taxpayers and parents, it was a feeling that the district let our children down and couldn't comprehend how money was being handled the last two years. Let's not forget, Mahopac is not a new name when mismanagement of money is spoken about. I was wondering, did the Board in executive session behind closed doors vote to support the budget? behind closed doors vote to support the budget? Because I know when it comes to a public vote, the board is supposed to be aligned, and all opposition happens before it goes public. I took the training last year, so I know what happens. And you asked why the budget got voted down, Mr. De Carlo. You hit the nail right on the head. Inflation is huge. Danielle has shot it. Prices are rising all around us. Supplies are shrinking. So yes, when there's an increase on the budget, taxpayers get concerned. When our assessments go up and do affect how much we pay because it's based on a higher assessment, we're concerned as taxpayers. So let's look at the issues we're having in 2022 that are unacceptable with the amount of tax we pay for. Why are we consistently having issues with towns at board meetings? Why are we consistently having issues with livestreaming meetings? You have to understand, it's 2022. A lot of people depend on YouTube and watch through their schedules on YouTube for the fact that they don't have cable anymore. Regarding the budget, you have to stop threatening students and teachers. Okay? So May pack, May pack has four assistant superintendents. One for curriculum, one for HR, one for finance, and one for educational services. Sorry, but do we really need four people to do all these things? If we combine all four salaries, that's $446,112. So let's look at the tax levy and the whole area. You talked about other budgets that passed. May pack was the only budget above 2%. Well over 2% at 3.35. Carlo was at .97. Brewster was at 1.69. Hut Valley was 1.49. Yorktown, 1.91, and Lakeland, 1.99. That was the closest one to us. They all passed. 3.35. Assesses all went up again. You also mentioned, you mentioned all the meetings regarding the budget and lack of attention to questions. Danielle had been hit on it. But I'll, I'll give you that. We need to work on that as a community, but go into meetings and hold you all accountable for what we elected you and you're hired to do. But let's be honest. How many times do we come up here, ask questions, and get no response? To be honest, I asked a question two months ago. I remember what the question is. I still haven't gotten an answer two months ago. Additionally, if you want more participation at the meetings, the district has to work on notices for these meetings. An email the day of doesn't cut it. I would like to thank you for last night. I can honestly say it was great to see you raising your voice at each other and having an open and honest conversation. It's about time you let us see some passion. I also like to say, when others get cut off by other members, like last night at the table, maybe in the future, those people will think about when they do it to somebody else on the table. I want to close with this. I have no complaints with my children's teachers. They do the best they can for our kids. And sometimes I feel they aren't given the right tools to do more. That's not a knock on you. It's not a knock on the union, but maybe you just need to hear it and understand where we're coming from, and you need to fix that. Do more benchmarking with other areas. You can learn a lot. Again, thank you very much for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Ms. Franklin, welcome.
Hi. Thank you. You're very welcome. Yeah, I just, I wanted to speak because, not that I was happy that the budget wasn't passed, but I do, I was very concerned at the level of the increase. And I, you know, with everything going on with every year, taxes going up and the school taxes are a large part of the budget. And there are people that have had to move out of our area because we went to full, full valuation. Taxes became very difficult. So I can understand. And we don't really want, you know, people who've been in the community for years to leave. I've only been up here six years. My children are already out of the system. But I understand finance, and I understand budgets. My husband retired, and it's important. And when I looked at that number, and when I looked at the trends, and I looked at the enrollments, I couldn't understand. I couldn't reconcile that certain increases, increasing increases. And, and I'm just wondering, just as a thought, I know that we have, there's some COVID money. I don't know if there's some things in the budget that perhaps are really COVID-related, and maybe that could be a way of benefiting the budget in some way. Or looking at, I don't know where we are in regard to the actuals for this current year versus what our budget was. Maybe if we look at that, we can see areas that we really have savings in. And maybe we could project those into the current year. I, I know there's a lot of like best practices in terms of analyzing, streamlining, trying to bring down responsibilities. I also think there's a lot of administration in the district our size. And instead of hiring another principal for a school, maybe we should consider more sharing, only having one. Enrollments are down. I think we really need, it's, it's hard. It's hard to let go. But I think there are, I think we have to let go. We have to look at things and see what's possibly not totally necessary for our children. Or there may be things that are necessary for our children that we're not doing. So I just think, you know, sharpen your pencil as sharp as it can be, and, and don't, you know, make threatening claims that we're going to cut this, and cut this, and cut this. And then people are going to be like upset and, you know, blaming people that voted no for the budget. And I really think it could be, you know, common sense by going from department by department. I'm sorry, I didn't look at it last night. I'll go back and look at it after. But, okay, that's all I have. The paper ballot voting, is that just conservative security and stuff like that from paper ballots? Did they go into something when they're voted, or just elected?
Yes, I'll have the brown mailbox there.
Okay.
At the gym, whichever gym it is that's determined. And you'll, you'll read your vote just like you normally would and put that paper ballot into the mailbox. And then at the end of the night, they'll be counted. They'll be hand counted and livestreamed, and that's on the board.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So I think that's all for comments.
Okay. So, yes.
So you were looking at, so?
I had something too, so. Oh, no. I just wanted to, you know, I've been on this, I've been on this school board for six years. And even though, yeah, even though we went out with 3.36, look historically over the last 10 years, you know, we, we were consistently in the .9, .8, .2, .6. If you, if you take a look at some of the history now, this was probably the higher run that we've had. So, but, but to your point, I thought last night's meeting, I meant this board, because we got to, you know, we got into the meaningful things. We understand, you know, we understand with the community. You know, you always like to win things by touchdowns, like several touchdowns. You know, win or lose by eight votes, that's insignificant today. It's 50% worth of effort, 50% tough work. So what we have to do is we have to find out where that, you know, where the, you know, where the community is with regards to getting this and not in any way, shape. So I like to say earlier, the schools are the heartbeat of this community. They always have, they always will. Okay? So what this board is committed along with the leadership team to making sure that we get back to you guys that we're going to get something, that we're going to get this thing going in the right direction.
So thank all of you who came and ended up tonight. I know it's not easy, so thank you very much. I, I can assure you that a part of this process, and you will see it on Tuesday night, some of the questions that you have asked will be a part of what those discussions are. So it's always that balancing act, right? Because what we don't want to do is obliterate and start taking out programs. So in my letter, it clearly can say one specific area, and it said, we have to look at every single area. So I just want to make that clear. None of us, myself, the cabinet, or this floor is going in with any determination that this is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to cut it. Listen, I want to keep everything. That's what I want to do.